Good morning, everyone.
No, no, no.
Okay. Roll call of the City Council for the meeting of Wednesday, January 8th, 2014. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, all please rise for a moment of silent meditation and the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, this morning, we ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom and give us the right information to be able to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. We also want to remember those that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, in our global as well as our local family, and all those who have lost loved ones since we were last in these chambers. We ask to remember in our thoughts and prayers and our meditation this morning as well.
The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from the December 18th meeting and bills for payment on December the 10th. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay, next we have, to begin the meeting, a resolution by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Rancunzo. That Mr. Melvin Witherspoon is hereby appointed City Council President for the year 2014. Mr. Brennan. See, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay. Congratulations.
Do you want to hand over the gavel like this?
Jim, on behalf of the members of council, we'd like to present this plaque to you for a job well done as President of City Council for the year 2013. You have created a legacy that I will continue.
You know, I've always looked up to you. I just remember that far enough, you know what I mean?
I just want to thank everyone. It's been an honor serving this council as well as council president this last year. Maybe a few hiccups in the road once or twice, but all in all, it's been a great year. I appreciate the support of everyone as well as my fellow council members. No doubt in my mind that Mr. Witherspoon will do the job at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmen. And I'd like to thank the remaining council persons for their confidence, their vote of confidence, for having me to lead you through 2014. I'd like to recognize my son, Robert Witherspoon, who came in today. Thanks, son, very much. If you see him leaving early, he has to go to work. He has to get out to SCI Albion. So I appreciate taking the time, son. We have a lot of things we have to cover this year. We're dealing with the sunset law, we're dealing with garbage, we're dealing with fees, we're dealing with sewers, and we're going to jump on this right away. We aren't going to wait. We're going to deal with it right away through our finance committee chaired by Jessica Rancunzo. Without any further ado, Mr. Clem, let's move forward.
Okay, we have, for a repository sale, we have John Richard Lilly, Jr. Just come to the microphone and tell us what you're going to do with the property.
All right, um, I plan to, if I get the property, I plan to either fix it up and resell it or rent it out as a landlord.
Property's located at 527 East 13th Street?
That's correct, yes.
Any questions from council? Mrs. Rancunzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This property, does it have a house on it or is it vacant?
It has a house.
It has a house?
Mr. President?
And you feel that you can repair the house and live in it, or what are your plans?
No, I was going to use it for like an income property.
Okay. Do you have some experience in rehabbing properties in the past? Have you done this in the past?
No, I don't. This would be my first one.
Do you have experience in being a landlord or renting out properties?
No, I don't.
Okay, so this is all, this is all new to you?
Yes, this is, I'm hoping to get started.
And what, what made you interested in this particular property?
Um, I was just looking through the properties and on the list, and it looked, it looked decent, and it was like one of the only properties that actually had a, had a house on it. Most of them were just land, and I just figured I'd go for it. So I seen it on there and I took the steps to try to get it.
You have some idea of what the house is going to need, what kind of repairs and things it's going to need?
Um, I'm not sure, but I know that sometimes the properties that are on the list, they, sometimes people, you know, take the piping or they steal the furnace or, you know, take the electrical wiring and stuff like that, so.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not really sure how much all that's going to cost to repair, if that's the case, but I wouldn't be able to find that out until I actually acquired the property, so.
Right, and you have some monies to put into this property, or?
Um, I plan on getting a loan either through like family or like a private lender or just anywhere I can get a loan from.
And the important thing to council, and the reason why we ask you questions, is because properties that get purchased by repository sale are forgiven back taxes and fees and things that the city is pretty much letting go. So we want to make sure that the person who purchases that property is going to improve it. Currently, the property is considered a blight, is considered an eyesore or whatever, it has problems. And so when we forgive those back taxes and stuff, it's our goal then, the person who takes it over is going to make it better and improve it and make it a benefit to the neighborhood as opposed to detracting from the neighborhood. And you have a commitment to do that for us?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I don't have any more questions at this point, some council members may.
Mr. President? Just to kind of reiterate what Mrs. Rancunzo was saying, is we're going to be a little more stringent in asking questions, so don't take it personal. Because what we've experienced is that sometimes we have great ideas and no one can get into these properties until you own it. And then you get into it and it's hollow or something, or it's crazy looking, and it's like, oh my God, I can't do anything with this. And often what's happened is that people who purchase, purchases these properties on repository sale get overwhelmed financially, construction-related costs and everything that goes into. And so we wanted to give you a fair understanding that when you walk into this, this could be much more than what you think. Not to scare you off, not to, but we're doing our due diligence to try to be better to make sure people know this is not always an easy ride and it's not always an inexpensive ride. And what happens is when it gets to be overwhelming for some time, for people sometimes, it goes right back into the blight process because they don't have the money to put into it, so it sits again. And so we have to pay to get through this whole process again with a new owner. And so we just want to make sure that you're clear, and we're going to do this with everyone that has a building on their property that they're looking for, to say, these are not always as easy fixes as we think. And so respectfully, not, again, not questioning your ability, your finances, I don't know you, but just to give you a fair shake, that you're going to walk into something that could be a little overwhelming, and we want you to know that because we don't want to see it again later because it was too much for a person, okay? So don't, again, I don't want you to take it personal like we're beating you over the head or anything, but we just want to make sure you're clear on that, too.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any more questions?
Mr. President, one thing, you might have said this, do you live close to this property or you live next door?
Um, I live on, I live on the 300 block of the west side, so it's fairly, pretty far away.
I see what you, yeah. Okay, I just was, I didn't know if it was an adjacent property to your property or if you lived in the neighborhood, or, okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council? Okay, we will not vote on that today. We will vote on it at our next meeting, which is next Wednesday. You can be here if you desire, you do not have to be here. City Clerk's office will contact you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you tell me what time that meeting is?
Uh, 7:00 PM.
Okay.
7:30.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Hearing none, Mr. Clem, we'll move on.
Citizens to be heard, we have a reservation with, by Randy Barnes.
Okay, please give us your name and your address.
Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. Congratulations, President Witherspoon.
Thank you, sir.
Kaz, welcome guests, staff. Shakespeare wrote in about 1598, not in the same words, but what he meant to say was, "Don't shoot the messenger." I'm just trying to bring some facts. And I want to talk a little bit about the update on the inland port, starting with the Harbor Creek Township moving through the Port of Erie and finishing in Albion. Number of Harbor Creek residents supporting the intermodal rail yard? Zero. Number of elected Harbor Creek supervisors in support of the intermodal rail yard in Harbor Creek? Zero. Number of past Harbor Creek supervisors in support? Zero. In fact, three wrote in editorial appearing in the paper, January 4th, strongly against it. Number of regional businesses have said they will import or export raw material or finished goods via the intermodal? Zero. Number of companies have publicly stated they would be interested in establishing a logistics shipping hub in Erie if intermodal was built? Zero. Number of railroads offering monetary assistance in building the intermodal? Zero. According to a 132-page study published August 2013, the study, the Baltimore-Washington Rail Intermodal Facility, is a health impact assessment. Conclusion was, air pollution and health issues will increase, adjacent property values will decrease. Currently, there are intermodals in Buffalo and Cleveland. Buffalo loads about 30 to 40 rail cars a day at their intermodal just from the post office and UPS. Now, we won't have that advantage here, we know we don't even sort mail in Pennsylvania, in Erie anymore. Again, and the reason why I'm talking about these three parts of this inland port is a past councilman, Mr. Evans, said that this offers the greatest promise of possibility. So I think it's important we are updated and we all pay attention to this. In the Port of Erie, a new rail grant, $2.6 million that was, was awarded last month to facilitate the loading, unloading, storing of, exporting of wooden pellets that are burned to produce energy. Of course, this grant came from those increase in tax and tax, gas tax and fees passed last month. Total project's over $5 million. This will be built on blighted property. Now, if that area down at the dock is blighted property, I think the entire Allegheny Forest would be blighted property, and every park that has trees on it could be considered blighted property. Of the nine pellet producers in Pennsylvania, how many export pellets now? Zero. Number of pellet companies publicly stating they want to build in Erie and export pellets? Zero. If there are real companies interested in building and making pellets in northwestern Pennsylvania, why not make them public? Why not give the ordinary person like me or all of you a chance to invest in these companies ahead of time? Of course, we heard about this, the, two years ago, that there was companies interested in building a pellet company in Pennsylvania. One thing about, one thing about the GEIDC that's going to run this operation is, how much profit do you think the GEIDC made in 2010 and 2011? Zero. They lost money. Between those two years, they lost $4 million. That was in the grant that, the grant application, that they aren't making money, they're losing money. Let's move on out to Albion, let's talk a little bit about what's going to go on out in Albion. We know that there's a smelting, a company wants to build in smelt metal, and what that is, you take raw material out of the ground and you make it into pig iron, which is used in the making of steel. From the grant application, Erie Times News did an article last week on January 1st about the proposed water, and they talked about some partners, Great River Iron Sands and Northern, North Atlantic Iron Corporation. Well, there's actually two more Canadian companies that were partners. One was Coder, and the majority owner of, of Iron Sands in North Amer, uh, North Atlantic was Muscat Minerals. Now, not a common name we hear of in the U.S., it's a Canadian company, Muscat Minerals, Muskrat Minerals, like the rodent Muskrat. They've been in existence for two years, so maybe that's why you haven't heard of them. Now, they are, Muskrat does trade on the Canadian Stock Exchange. Yesterday, they closed at 75 cents a share. Now, Coder was listed on New York Stock Exchange, was de-listed in November last year, but they trade on this Toronto Stock Exchange. Yesterday, they closed at 22 cents a share. Now, I'm not sure if we want to bet the pension fund on Muskrat Minerals, but I think we're betting our future economic development out in Albion. One thing about Albion is served by-
Mr. Sir.
Yes, I'll wrap it up in 20 seconds, President.
What I want our citizens to understand, once the bell goes off, we don't wrap up, we're done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Good morning.
Newly elected, congratulations. My name is Edward Dawson. I reside at 4812 Wood Street, 16509. I come before you today for two reasons. The first is, we pay about, as a small business owner, we pay about $30,000 in taxes. And then there's the fee for apartments and so forth, of which that's my small business. To add another tax or increase our garbage for people who are already struggling to pay rent now is overwhelming. I, a good local businessman who pays my taxes regularly and beforehand if I got the money, so that I, I save a little, but every year, I have paid my taxes. For you to let people go who don't pay their refuge taxes, and to the thousands, and then later attempt to come back and get it from those who have been paying, seems to me that what you're doing is, you found the good people who pay and you plan to penalize them, versus go find the bad people who don't and go after them. I strongly suggest to you that my rental fees that I charge, the low-income people that I rent to, will hurt greatly. The state has already cut out quite a bit of their financial support. The state has already cut out their food stamps to a large degree. What the state doesn't cut out is their pension funds and their healthcare funds. They seemingly get their salaries regardless if they're good or bad officials and they stay in office for four years and they get that pension. The good people who pay their taxes of Erie should not be rewarded with more taxes. I suggest to you strongly at the council, find another way to collect that fee from those who don't pay you. Don't charge us good-paying loyal citizens more tax fees when we pay you on time every year as small businesses. Now for the good news, and secondarily. I am the state president of the Elks Organization for IBP OEW, the Improved Benevolent Protective Order of Elks of the world. We intend to bring a five-day convention to the city of Erie, and we'll need your help. I can't plan to come to you as the council, mayor's office and so forth, let you know what our five-day agenda is, and we'll need your assistance. Hopefully, the city will open its doors and allow the persons who will be here for five days for you to be able to collect your funds and let us use the municipality golf courses and so forth while they're here, and that you'll help us. So as the president of the Pennsylvania State Association, who's due for election this year, who will host it at the Avalon this year, we hope the council will be, afford themselves to help us in some way, make sure that the city of Erie is ready to host the five-day convention from the Elks coming in, and that you will assist us in whatever capacity and whatever as far-reaching realm that you have to help us put this convention on. I thank you this morning, and I hope you listen.
Thank you, Mr. Okay, we have time for one more before we take a break. Morning.
Good morning.
And congratulations to the incumbent and the new councilman and President Depp. First of all, I want to comment on the shooting over the past weekend, and there was comments made, you know, from the police department that, when they were trying to do their investigation, trying to find out what went down, and the peoples that was around made the statement, you know we don't mess with y'all. I mean, and they blowing that up like, it's something that they never heard of before. And the peoples on the street saying, why should we cooperate with the police? They don't do nothing for them. All they do is lock them up. So they make their job that much harder. But my thing is, we have a serious problem in our community. When peoples doesn't work with establishment that's there to protect them, which people saying that they don't, we have a problem. We have a serious problem. And the other thing is, the fact is that these peoples don't have jobs, and no avenues to get jobs. What do a society think people supposed to do when there's not no work and they don't see no possibility in the future that none of this going to change? What attitude is it that people supposed to have in term of dealing out there in the street? And I'm not saying what's, what's going on is right, that's not right. People is dying. People's children is dying. You know, and I got, explained to y'all over the years, I got kids out there, you know, and one of the most dreaded things that I would hate is to get a phone call in the middle of the night or early in the morning or whenever that one of my kids done got off in the street. And I don't see anything in the street that important for our children to be dying about. There's nothing out there that important that our children have to keep dying. Okay, now with that said, now I want to get this other little part out. This is January, summer will be upon us in a minute. Now, we talked about that little measly $5,000 we talked about last year, doing something for the kids for the summer. We have an opportunity to time now, this is January, to do something between now and June. Our children need summer jobs. And I'm quite sure the city of Erie know, driving around this city, all the properties that the city owns is not, the grass is not getting cut during the whole summer. You want to know what you can do with the kids to do? Clean up the city properties. They could do that with supervision of the city. We have to create something, you know, and like, from what I'm seeing up there, there's no vision for them doing anything in this community to change things. We have a mayor that ain't been in our community in 12 years, we're going on 12, so what that tells us? He don't care. And we have serious problems in our neighborhood. And he don't care because he ain't been out there to say about them. He ain't even asked question about what's going on out there. If he did, he ain't talked to none of the peoples in the neighborhoods, and the people that he was talking to, he might be getting, getting the wrong information. We have serious problems in the neighborhood out there. And I wish somebody up there, you know, would at least throw them a bone, throw them something because they ain't getting nothing. And I'm quite sure somebody up there understand what I'm talking about. Our children is suffering out there in them streets. You know, and, you know, I tried to talk to the kids, they look at me like, hey, man, like, you know, we understand where you're coming from, brother, but, uh, don't keep us asking us questions like that. And I'm looking at them saying, well, like, what am I supposed to say? Leave it alone, none of your business. But it's all our business when our children is dying. Thank you very much, I'll see y'all next time.
Thank you, Mr. McAdory. Right now, we're going to have our, we have three hearings scheduled, I believe it is, yeah, three scheduled at 9:30. Mr. Clem?
Yeah, I'm waiting for the speaker. It's a lot easier down here. Oh, yeah. Six inches makes a big difference.
We get our needs recommended, yes, now?
Okay. Yeah, it's East 38. Yeah, we got to clean up that. Yeah, who's first? This is Pizza Hut right here. You ever been up there? No, maybe not. Yeah, right to this side, yeah. City Council now proceed to hold public hearings relative to three zoning matters. The first one is pursuant to an amendment request to zoning ordinance 802005, and after the proper legal advertising, City Council will proceed to hold this public hearing at this time to consider an amendment to the city of Res zoning Code relative to the rezoning request of Attorney Richard Vendetti to rezone property commonly known as 2021 and 2047 East 38th Street. There's a typo on the agenda, it's East 38th Street, from R1 Low Density Residential District to that of C1 Local- It's East 38th Street from R1 Low Density Residential District to that of C1 Local Commercial District. Anybody here in favor of the rezoning?
Good morning to you all. Good morning. My name is Richard Vendetti. I'm a senior partner of Vendetti Brothers Associates. This concerns the rezoning of 2021 and 2027 East 38th Street. Glad Mr. Clem straightened out the west to the east. This property is located next to Pizza Hut on, uh, it's eight lots, four on Zimmerman, four on East 38th Street, four frontage of 220 feet. This property was purchased by my father probably in 69 or 1970, whereupon he built a car wash, we called it the Liberty Car Wash East. At that time, probably in about '72 or '73, my brother obtained, Chester Vendetti obtained a zoning designation change from residential to commercial. And it was C1 from, oh, probably when the car wash opened up in '73 or '74 up to about 1999. So it was always local commercial. Somehow in 1998 or 1999, when the plot map was submitted to City Council, the designation was reverted back to residential. We were not even aware of that until recently, this year, we've offered the property for sale. It's in the hands of Jeff Johnson Realtor, and he notified me, prospective purchasers were looking at it. He notified me, said, Richard, this property is residential. My brother said, can't be. It's been a car, a car wash for some 25 years. So we took the steps to revert it back to, uh, local commercial C1 designation, which is what it should be. And it's, it's, uh, it's about as simple as that. It's been, it's been commercial for 25 years until somehow inadvertently, we believe, it got changed back to residential. So we're asking for that change to go back to commercial, including the house we purchased next door. The four lots on Zimmerman, fronting on Zimmerman, the four lots fronting on East 38th Street comprise about an acre and a half, 1.58 acres. To enhance the use for commercial plaza, we purchased the lot next door from a fellow named Howells, I think four, four or five years ago, four years ago. And that's 2027. And that likewise runs the length of 38th Street South to Zimmerman, about another third of an acre, I would think, in case somebody wants that. So that, we're asking for that designation, which is residential, always has been, also to C1 designation. That's it. Any questions? Any further explanation?
Any questions from Council?
Mr. President, if I could. Mr. Vendetti, the property is still for sale or did you, are you maintaining it in the Vendetti ownership?
No, we, we've owned it, we've owned it for 40 years.
You said you had a Realtor involved, though?
We do, Jeff Johnson Associates.
So you're trying to sell it?
Since about October.
Okay, so you're trying to sell it, it's on the market?
We have prospective purchasers.
You have, okay. And what?
But we have no contract because of our residential designation.
Okay. And what type of business do you know what they intend to put in there or what were you expecting they would do with it?
Not, I, I really don't know, so I don't want to tell Council. Probably the best use, the best use would be a small strip plaza which would face west entrance on East 38th Street and then face the Pizza Hut. That's probably the best use, but you never know what developers are gonna do. But there's no, there's no signed contract and want on, not anticipating signing it and anything until after the zoning is re-designated back to commercial. Fact is, we have no one interested if it's residential.
Go ahead, sorry, I'm just taking a break.
Good morning, Mr. Vendetti. Do you know at what time of the, that you own this property or your family owned the property, that it would have possibly went back to residential? I mean, it just seems odd that it was commercial and it just went to residential now.
You can look at the plot map with all the funny colors on it, the end of the zoning book, it's, uh, it's residential. How it got designated back to residential? I don't know how. We were, we were somewhat surprised at summertime when Jeff Johnson, I think we listed it in September, and he, and we were very surprised. And I said, it can't be. Talked to Armand, and it's residential on no one's motion.
Hmm, interesting.
Armand can explain that a little bit better. I think the, the City Council, the new fellows would know that you, you, you receive a, a plot map and they designate everything, how it's gonna be, and every 10 years or so. And, uh, we think it was inadvertently changed from commercial to residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the previously owned or currently owned property that your father purchased and that had the car wash on it, that has been reverted back to residential? Yes. And then there's additional property that you all have purchased since then that you want to include in this rezoning? Is that accurate?
That addresses 2027, 40 foot wide, just a house, but it runs straight back about 250 feet to Zimmerman.
Okay. So, so we're, we're, I mean, it's, it's combined and I, I get that, but I just wanted to make sure I heard you clearly that.
It's not combined, uh, there's.
I mean, in the rezoning, in the rezoning ask.
For your purposes, the zoning will include 2027 to be designated commercial.
Okay. Because I just wanted to make sure that I heard it clearly, that we're not just taking property that you had historically for 40 years as commercial that reverted inadvertently, but we're also in conjunction with that, taking some other C1, I mean, excuse me, taking other rightfully residential and rezoning that to C1 together?
Exactly correct.
All right, thank you.
Separate indexes.
Right, but in this whole, in this action, we would do both of those things?
In your motion today, 2027 is also, we're also requesting that be designated commercial.
Yes, okay.
Separate piece of property.
Thank you.
Councilman Kowalski?
Uh, yes, I'm familiar with the property. And while I support development on the east side heavily, I do hope the residents are taken into consideration when you do your development, but also I would hope in the short, short term that you could keep the property up to date a little bit. It tends to get a little ratty and I get a lot of phone calls. So, you know, while I'm in favor generally of this project, and I do want to, you know, look into it, I think something has to be done on that property. And just so I understand, like Councilman Jones, we will be adding some property to your existing, what used to be the C1 property. So I understand it now, so thank you.
Yes, we are.
Mr. President? Thank you. Um, just, are, are documents here saying 2047? Are we on 2047 also in 2027 or just 2021 and 2027?
No, I believe it's 2020, yeah, this says 2047.
Oh, there might be a discrepancy, I think, Mr. Chamanu is saying. I just thought maybe there was more properties than we have listed here.
It's, the deed is 2047.
Okay, and that is the one home you said that you put, you have, that's 2047 is the residential?
And that's currently residential, always has been residential.
And there's a home there?
There's a home. It's currently rented, 40 foot wide by about, I believe, 258 feet.
And that would, um, under this rezoning would stay a home or that would be, uh, removed and part of a commercial development?
Jeff Johnson doesn't think a, a developer or a potential purchaser would use the home. They may, we, we purchased it for that, for that purpose, to be added to the 220 feet. 220 feet's a little light when you're talking about a plaza on front footage, so we want to extend it to 260 feet. He says his inquiries now are for the plaza and not for the house. But we would, we would, we purchased for that purpose and if you don't zone it that, then we'll probably sell it as a, as a residence.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions?
Not yet.
When, when big boxes looked at it, not big box, but something like a Dollar General or a Dollar Tree, the additional 40 feet would be advantageous to have that. And that's why we're doing that. There's a Dollar General across the street, if you're familiar with the area, there is a Dollar General across the street. But it's just not quite big enough for a big box. So, um, we're just taking it from there and see what else, what else comes in for development purposes, sale purposes. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Are there anyone else in favor of? Is there anyone else in favor of? A hearing none? Are there anyone against? Please give us your name and address.
My name is Joe Salerino. I live at 3904 Ellen Drive. It's a cul-de-sac just east of the property that's being talked about. One thing that Mr. Vendetti mentioned when he was speaking was that they're planning on a strip mall. What's gonna happen when they put a strip mall in the property that's there, which is all trees and brush and water running through it, is that the way he's describing it is that the back end of the strip mall is going to be facing east. What happens when this property is sold and the strip mall is put up, there's still going to be residents that are living in that area, are going to be facing a strip mall back. And that is gonna not be good for the property, it's gonna drop the value of the property. The, the property at 2021 East 38th Street, which goes from 38th to Zimmerman, it's just east of the car wash, as he pointed out, is, it's been there as long as the city's been here. It's always been open with trees and brush, with a creek running through it. And during the, the season where we get a lot of rain, there is always a lot of water in that area, which the Council could look at this as a, as a wet, whatever we call it, a, a wet, I have. Wetlands, I'm sorry, I missed that. It could be deemed as a wetlands because it's been there forever and it does get a lot of water at certain times of the year. The, the main thing about this is that the people that are living close to this area, there is only a driveway between three houses on 38th Street, the one that Mr. Vendetti owns, and there are two other houses. And the only thing that separates them is one driveway. So if they put a strip mall and they do decide to take the house down that he owns, then the strip mall is gonna be, the back end of the strip mall is gonna be very close to the two homes that are, one on 38th Street and one that is on Zimmerman. So anybody that wants to live behind a, a strip mall, they know what it's gonna be like. I think if, if Council looks at this a little closer and they look at the property and they see what kind of property it is, there is a possibility that it could become a wetlands because, because of the land that's there, and one of our council members knows about the land, he's obviously seen the land and knows what it's like because of the, they do not keep the, the grass cut, they don't keep a lot of the junk around it, they don't keep that cleaned up. But the main purpose is that it's, it's in an area where the homes in that area are going to be, probably their value is gonna drop, especially if they do proceed with a strip mall. And I think Council should look at this really a little further before they make the decision on passing this ordinance, because I think the people in that area are gonna suffer for it. And I don't think that's what City Council wants to do before they see these things and study them and find out exactly what's going to be happening if this gets passed. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other person like to speak against?
Good morning. Uh, my name is Joanne Perry and I live at 2051 East 38th Street. And my driveway is the one that, or my house is gonna be the one facing the rear of that strip mall. What do you think that's gonna do to my property value? It's probably worth about $90,000 now. It'll be dropped down to, I'll be lucky at $40,000. I mean, the house behind me too was just sold, but nothing came out about it at that time, so the, the new people that live there, I feel sorry for them too. But I just wanted to let you know how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any others to speak against? Are there any others to speak against? Are there any others to speak against? Hearing none? We'll hear from administration? Oh, is there one more? One moment.
Good morning. The lady that was just up, I'm the new people.
Excuse us, would you give us your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Melanie Goodwin is my name, and I live at 3939 Zimmerman. The property that my neighbor was just talking about, the people that just moved in was me. I've never lived in the city before, and when I saw the property on Zimmerman, I'll be honest, I fell in love with, with my house and, and the backyard and, and the trees next to my property. And at the time, the idea of having something built there wasn't even in discussion. I didn't know, you know, anything about any development that wanted to be put in. And honestly, if, if I would have known, I wouldn't have purchased the house. I would have taken the advice from, you know, a lot of the people that I'd spoken to when we were looking at a house to purchase, to live in the county, Harbor Creek, Summit, that type of idea. But I've always lived in the area area, and so I figured, you know, it would be a good idea to, to move into this area. It's a nice neighborhood, it's very nice people that live there. And altogether, it's, it's a nice place to live. But, you know, as far as a strip mall being built, I just bought my house. You know, if, if property values drop, how am I gonna sell it? You know, how am I supposed to be able to make up that difference? You know, that idea of, of still having my ideal home, but not living next to a strip mall? And I understand, you know, that it's a business and, and, you know, people are out to make money, I, I get that. But what about us? You know, what about the people that live there? When we first saw the house, you know, I, I thought about a family and, you know, having my children, you know, in the backyard and, and playing or whatever, and, you know, going to the, the local schools, and a strip mall wasn't in the vision, you know. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it'll really hurt the property value about where we live. And you're gonna see a lot of people moving out of the area, you know, and having that bad taste in their mouth about the idea of living in the city. And I know that's not something that you would want to happen. So I, I just wanted to let you know how I feel and, and I don't think it's a good idea. I understand that they, they want to make money off the property, but there has to be some other way to do it besides a strip mall, even if it's houses, you know, having people live there, turning it all into residential if it already is already. You know, why not build houses there anyway, if it's a nice place to live? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Once again, are there anyone else want to speak against? Hearing none, administration? Hearing none, administration?
My name is Armin Schmenny, and I'm the secretary to the planning commission. Mr. President and members of council, the planning commission at the regular meeting on November nineteenth reviewed a proposal to rezone these two properties from single-family residential to C-one local commercial. There's currently a car wash located on one and a single-family dwelling located on the other. The commission unanimously, unanimously recommended that council approve this request to rezone the parcels from R-one to C-one. Excuse me. The commission believes this rezoning should be granted on the grounds that it would be an appropriate expansion of the C-one district.
Any questions to administration?
Mr. President, if I could. Mr. Schmenny, couple of questions. The C-one, is there any other C-one to the east of this particular property?
Yes, the Pizza Hut right next door to the car wash is Zone C-one.
Pizza Hut be to the west of the property?
Yes, to the west, I'm sorry.
But going east, is it all residential, R-one, all the way to the?
To the corner.
I'm looking, trying to look at it online, but my eyes aren't that good on here.
To the corner is R-one, yes.
So are there all residential homes along there? Is that all residential homes?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the fact that there's a car wash there now, would they, if they were to have, open up a car wash or reopen or whatever, would be a non-conforming use, would it not? I mean, they're allowed to have a car wash because it already exists.
Because it exists, yes, they could have a car wash.
Anything else that'd be an extension of the non-conforming use, if they didn't change it?
Yes, you could, you could have anything that's allowed in RLB when you change from a non-conforming use to another. Because you couldn't make a house out of that, it's a little more lenient, so it lets you use the RLB district to have, you know, some kind of business there rather than put a home. You could put a home and a business or a home or a business there.
But that, would it require them to only use the footprint of the existing car wash?
No, it would not. They would have to meet regular zoning.
So technically, the, the particular area that the car wash is on, on is not limited by its zoning to just be a car wash or a resi, or a home, because it's R-one? It could be variety of things at this point without a rezoning?
Correct.
And the, like, I guess the parcels of, on, facing on Zimmerman, do they count within that same?
Yeah, the, the parcel goes from, I believe, from Thirty-Eighth to Zimmerman, and it's all one, all one big parcel.
Is there only one parcel really in this, in this group, they, two, two zero four seven, that is strictly R-one?
Yes, that little parcel. I believe you have it on your map there outlined.
Is it the one?
Parcel two oh four.
Two oh four?
Yes.
And there's no C-one going to the east of this, but there is C-one to the immediate west?
Correct.
In the Pizza Hut. So you don't see it as like, it's not spot zoning, because it would connect us to another C-one, but on one side only?
Correct.
And behind it would continue R-one, and, and to the east would continue R-one? But it, but in, but just to be clear, they could develop this within the existing because of a non-conforming use?
I could say they could only use what's in RLB, they couldn't use what was, what was in C-one.
Can you give us some kind of overview of what the use is allowed in the C-one would be?
Okay, we have banks, beer distributors, car washes, cleaners, coffee shops, daycare centers, drive-in business, eating and drinking establishments, fitness centers, funeral homes, gas stations, libraries, museums, limited retail business, multiple family dwellings, personal services, pet grooming, professional services, and theaters and video rentals.
So that's pretty, there's not any objectional, objectionable uses in C-one, they're all pretty normal uses?
Right, there's no, yeah, there's no adult or...
No adult, it's only that, that's in the...
Right, in C-one, it's all considered a local business district.
And the RLB, which would be the non-conforming use fallback position, would include some businesses of those same nature, offices, things like that?
You, you would be limited, like, for the size of your, of your businesses?
Oh, yeah, setbacks and...
Right. I mean, you can have a convenience store, but it couldn't be more than seven thousand square feet or...
Okay, size restrictions.
But it's mostly for professional uses, you know, doctors, offices, right?
Offices, doctors. Is, does C-one require a, the setback on the C-one is zero setback, or I don't think it's zero.
No, if you, a, but a residential district is a foot per foot. So if the building is twenty-foot high, you have to be at least twenty feet away from the property line. However, when we do this, sometimes the fire department will override if they need thirty feet to get around the building, then, then we have to make it thirty feet. It's, we have meetings on this before anything is built.
Okay. Okay. And, and from the frontage, is, is this average frontage of the neighborhood, or what is the frontage where they could build?
The frontage would be, it doesn't have to be, it can't, you know, it, there is no setback, per se, but if you have a strip mall and you have parking, then we have to have a twenty, twenty-foot aisle and a nine-by-eighteen parking space. So we're talking about at least thirty-eight-foot frontage from the property line, which, which is a norm.
Normal.
If a mall goes in, if a strip mall goes in.
Is there required parking in C-one?
Yes, it would be, depending on what businesses are there, you know, like if there's a, a restaurant there, there could be one parking space for every four seats.
Right.
And if it's a small business, it would be a parking space for every five hundred square feet, and we would add all those together for the required parking number.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schmenny.
Quick question.
Yes, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Armin, what are the regulations with changing the zoning in relation to communicating with the neighbors? You know, a certain number of feet and all that kind of stuff?
We did the, the law calls for the affected area, so we look at the map and look at everyone who is affected. That's why on your map, you can see it went all the way to Allen Drive, anybody who might be near there.
Right.
So we might go three or four hundred feet in one direction, but like on north of Thirty-Eighth Street, we wouldn't go that far because they wouldn't be affected near as much.
Okay. And then, so if there, I think we kind of hung up on the strip mall language, and I'm not sure if there's a commitment to that, so I, I guess that is scary for residents, to be honest. But are there, because of the C-one would be directly connected or abutting up to an R-one, are there regulations for distances and all those types of...
There's a height distance, and also there's a screening requirement, so something, either a six or eight-foot fence would have to be put up, or shrubbery that would grow to six feet within a year.
Right.
Something to block, you know, any, I guess it's for, to stop car lights from coming in, shining in your house at night, something.
Right.
Something of that nature, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't occur.
So in the process, whatever commercial use, there would be regulations to make as much comfort for the residential abutting them as possible?
Yes, there would be.
There, okay.
Mr. Schmenny, just for clarification purposes, because it was brought up by Mr. Salarino, just so the public knows, you do not look at wetlands or anything like that when you're looking at a, a zoning change like this. That's for the DEP, that's out of our jurisdiction, correct?
Absolutely, it is, yes.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Councilman Brennan?
Mr. Schmenny, just one quick question, just to, you know, you said a change in a certain, in a year, what, why was that change made and what year was it again?
Well, in the year two thousand, a new map came out, okay? And the whole city was, was, went under the rezoning process, and I think a waterfront condition was added at that time. There used to be a T-one, which was called Transitional, it's now called RLB, and this was probably something that fell through the cracks at that time when the whole map was done. You know, we're doing one change here for two, two parts. In nineteen ninety-nine, the whole city was reviewed, and council reviewed it, and, you know, they made the, they made the changes.
Okay, thank you.
One more.
Yes, sir.
This, this property is a sad idol, or this business has not been in operation for how long? Would you know that? I don't know.
I know it's...
Probably ninety-eight, okay.
I know it's, I've been by it a few times.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you very much. Of course, we will not be voting on this today. Mr. Clem, will we have this ready for our next meeting?
No, because of our schedule, this ordinance has to be advertised a week before first reading. That will not allow us to bring it up until our February, I believe it's fifth, meeting.
Okay.
So these items will not be on the agenda until, the zonings will not be on the agenda until probably February fifth.
Okay, thank you very much. We have two more zone hearings, zoning hearings, and looking at my fellow council persons, we'd like to take about a five-minute recess.
Oh, okay. City council now recess at ten-ten AM. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krasinski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winar. City council now reconvene at twelve-ten fifteen AM. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krasinski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winar, Mr. Witherspoon. Okay, we will now proceed to our second public hearing, which is a request to rezone a piece of property or properties relative to the rezoning of property located at three-fifty-six West Sixth Street from RLB Residential District to that of C-one Local Business District, and six additional lots, namely three-thirty-three, three-thirty-seven, three-forty-one, three-forty-five, three-forty-nine, and three-fifty-five West Fifth Street from R-three High Density Residential District to that of C-one Local Commercial District at the request of Caleb Pfeifer, Executive Director of the Erie County Historical Society. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the rezoning?
Good morning. My name is Jeff Kidder. I'm a partner with Kidder-Watson Architecture here in Erie, two-oh-one French Street, one-six-five-oh-seven. We are the architects working with Historical Society on a project at the Watson-Kurtsey property. Cal Pfeifer is here, if there's questions directly for the organization to. A little background information, the Erie County Historical Society was founded in nineteen oh three for the purpose of preserving and interpreting, educating the community on Erie County's history. They were, for a long time, were housed in the Custom House, which is the temple building on State Street where the art museum is. Then they moved into the Cashier's House next to it as they grew, and then in the early nineties, they purchased the Hile Drug Store directly next door at four-nineteenth State Street, renovated it, and opened the Erie History Center as their headquarters, which the, which is where they are today. They also operate and own the Watson-Kurtsey Mansion on Sixth Street, and they also have the Battles Museums of Rural Life and Girard. So they own and operate and maintain three different historic sites right now. They've been evaluating their organization and their facilities, and last year we were working with them, and they've basically outgrown the History Center on State Street, and a lot of the space in that building is used for archives and collection storage, too, plus exhibit and research and offices. And as you know, with archives, with libraries, there's a lot of weight and floor loading, and that's an eighteen forties building, and it's, it's pretty much maxed out. So they are kind of landlocked at this point. Also, recently, they have entered into an agreement and are selling the building to the art museum, and that was done in an effort to help the art museum do their expansion a few years ago. The art museum owned properties on both sides of that building, and they worked for a long twenty-five, thirty years trying to figure out how to expand under their Fifth Street property, and that History Center kind of was sitting in the middle of it, and I know when, through the years of Discovery Square efforts and stuff like that, that never happened, it ended up that an agreement was made, and they are purchasing the building so that they could go through the History Center building rather than trying to get around it, and that's how the art museum expansion is today. With that said, the realities of trying to maintain three properties is a lot for any organization, and the, the direction now is to turn the Watson-Kurtsey Mansion property on Sixth Street into their headquarters. A little history on that property is, it was built in eighteen ninety-one for the Watson family, Watson Paper, which is what the GAF plant was, started with that family, eighteen ninety-one, and they were there until nineteen twenty-three, when the Kurtsey family bought it, and that's why it's called Watson-Kurtsey Mansion. Nineteen forty-one, the Kurtsey family gave the property to the Erie School District to operate it as a museum. So since nineteen forty-one, that house and carriage house has been a museum. If you remember back in the nineties, the school district decided that they really didn't want to be in the museum business, and entered an agreement with Gannon for five years, thinking, hoping Gannon would take it over. After the five-year term, Gannon decided they didn't want to be in the museum business. So it went back to be in the Erie Historical Museum, under the umbrella of the Erie School District. In two thousand, the Erie County Historical Society took over ownership and responsibility of the Historical Museum and combided under their Erie County Historical Society organization, and have been operating it since then and trying to return it back to its historic nature, which wasn't the intent of the school district, it was just a exhibit building, and efforts have been to restore the mansion. Also, in fifty-nine sixty, the Junior League worked and put a planetarium in the carriage house, and so that's been there for fifty years. Recently, the Erie County Historical Society worked an arrangement with Penn State Barron, and the planetarium is going to be moving up to the Barron campus, and being actually enlarged and expanded and updated and improved, and better fits their mission than it does Historical Society's mission. So the carriage house is now, is going to be vacated this, this year, this summer. So the opportunity with Watson-Kurtsey Mansion is, it's, it's a huge priority for the Historical Society to maintain that property and keep it open to the public. Back in two thousand two through two thousand six, six lots were acquired behind the property on Fifth Street, that's three-thirty-three through three-fifty-three West Fifth Street. There had been splattered properties, residential properties back there, and they were acquired and cleared, and they've been sitting vacant since then. So right now, the Historical Society owns seven parcels in that, in the area, and that's what we're here for today. The mansion property is zoned RLB, as Sixth Street is. Sixth Street is a historic district, and the mansion itself is an individually listed historic building. The six lots behind are R-three, and they've been maintained as seven separate parcels, and there's an effort, urban engineers has done surveying and done the documents to combine the seven to be one parcel. Basically, if you own all the properties, you can combine them into one, and it could, you can have a single parcel with split zoning, so it could stay RLB Sixth Street side and R-three Fifth Street side. The reason for the request is that the mansion's going to be maintained, the carriage house can be maintained, but to move their operations over there, we have to build an addition behind the carriage house on the Fifth Street properties to relocate collections and research and offices and storage and stuff like that, which would be on the R-three parcels. Now, R-three doesn't allow museum use... Now, R-3 doesn't allow museum use. R.L.B. allows museums, but only up to 7,000 square feet. So even the mansion property as it sits today, the mansion and the carriage house are almost 20,000 square feet. So it's already exceeds the limit of what R.L.B., but it's been that way since 1941. So the request that we went to Planning Commission for was to turn the whole property into C-1 because C-1 allows museums over 7,000 square feet. And then that would let the project proceed without any variances or any, you know, to be in complete compliance with the zoning. We presented it to Planning Commission. Their comments, they understood the request, but as with C-1, as we heard Armin describe, list everything that's allowed in C-1, they basically were just, the intent is to keep it the Historical Museum, but they're saying 50 years from now, you know, if it's not a museum anymore, then anything that's allowed in C-1 could be built on that property. So their recommendation was to keep the mansion property R.L.B., make the R-3 properties R.L.B. So now the whole one parcel is R.L.B. We're okay with that, we understand the logic with that, but that now makes us have to go to the zoning hearing board to ask for variance to have a museum over the 7,000 square feet. We're okay with that too, but now that just puts us basically at the mercy of the zoning hearing board. So we're trying to work through this process as logically and as makes sense for the neighborhood, and we'll do whatever we have to do to make this happen, or the organization's committed to this happening and maintaining this property. But that's what I think Armin's going to report on, is the Planning Commission's recommendation that the whole property be R.L.B., and we're okay with that, but it just puts us still out on a limb a little bit because now we have to go through another public process and present to zoning hearing board. If there's any, I do, just for clarification here, have a handout for you if I may hand this out. That is a diagram. A diagram of what we're generally proposing. We don't have exact square footages for the new addition yet, but everything would fall within the requirements of zoning, setbacks, lock coverage, height, area, all that stuff. We just don't want to get too far into this because we need to get through this process before we spend a lot of time doing something that we're not exactly sure is going to be allowed yet. So if you look on here, you can see the mansion and carriage house are the purple buildings. Everything that's green on here on the ground plane is the mansion property in the six parcels on West Fifth Street. The intent of any new construction is behind the carriage house so that from Sixth Street, it is absolutely as invisible as possible. The priority is to maintain the historic appearance of the Watson-Kurtsey Mansion property from Sixth Street.
I don't know why you're looking at me, Mr. President. Really, no. Mr. Kidder, just a couple of questions. The proposed addition on Fifth Street, not addition, but new development on Fifth Street, you said those parcels, the 333 through 349 or 353, are all vacant now? They have no homes on them anymore?
They do not.
Okay. And you're going to put in there, you have on here, proposed research, archives, collection addition. Is that going to be something that is used for, like administrative or warehouse or type of thing, or is this an open-to-the-public facility that will be something people can use to go look at exhibits?
It's going to continue how they operate on Sixth, on State Street. If you've been in there, there's the public lobby, public exhibit area. You go upstairs, there's the research room and staff.
Okay.
And then there's, the research room has materials that are available to go in like a library, you know, to use, but you can't take out.
Oh, okay.
You can't check stuff out. And then all their research archive collections materials are, you request the staff to get it. So there is the, the public component that is currently on State Street will be shifted over here. The carriage house with the planetarium going to Barron now really freed up the development of the carriage house to be basically the front door to the campus, the visitor center, the lobby, tickets, sales shop, stuff like that. So as you do now on State Street, you walk in the front door and there's, you know, the counter there and the gift shop and stuff like that, that function would shift over here to the carriage house, and then you would say, "I'm here to research my house." They'd send you back, you know, into the new addition. And there's a research area, public component of that where you do exactly what you do now on the second floor of State Street. But, you know, over half of the building is really meant to house the collections, which are limited access, staff access, retrieval.
And the type of architecture you will propose for this, I know your work is exemplary, would be historical in nature, trying to copy some of this architecture or no?
No, it's really meant to be background.
Okay.
To be secondary to the historic buildings. We're not going to try to make it look like it's an 1890s building.
Okay.
The mansion and the carriage house are the focal pieces of the property, and this is meant to be in the background. So it's, and, you know, we've got to keep budget in mind, and we've got to keep, I mean, the square footage and the program of the building is what the organization needs, and the building is meant to be a background, simple building.
Oh, okay.
Please come to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, Cal will come up, but whenever you're adding on to a historic building, the general philosophy from a design standpoint is to not, to not make it look like it's, like it's always been there. I mean, you have to make a difference, you don't have to. The idea is, is that what's old maintains its old, and what's new can respect and interpret and expand upon, but the intent is not to make it look like an 1891 warehouse, basically.
Okay.
And there are no design guidelines, you know, and we don't have any local design guidelines in this neighborhood, so.
Right.
But, I mean, we're going to follow what we believe to be the best practices from an architectural standpoint, dealing with historic properties.
And this, this new piece, though, won't have any, it won't really front onto Fifth Street, it'll, it's set back enough from Fifth Street, it won't really be.
At this point.
Entered from Fifth Street, it'll come through.
Right. I mean, the intent is to keep it, to plan for future, we don't want to get into a situation where they got into on State Street, where they got, where they outgrew the building.
And all that.
You know, I mean, this is, this is a 50-year plan, and the intent is to start closest to the carriage house because we want to connect them.
Okay.
And then that, you know, leaves room for future expansion at some point.
Okay.
We don't know when, but we want to keep it closer to the existing buildings at this point. And we are proposing, as you can see, some additional parking because it is, you know, there's some limited parking there now, and having access to Fifth Street, just to, because Chestnut's one-way.
Right.
And you have the Sixth Street entrance, so it just helps the whole development function a little bit better from a visitor's experience. The other thing I did want to say is if you notice in upper right corner, to remember that the Firefighters Historical Museum is, is right there, and they're their own entity, but the two organizations obviously work together and support each other. But if, and if, they would work more in coordinating efforts and events and stuff too together. So, you know, there's this kind of partnership that's going on there, not officially, but one historical organization to another.
Now, this concept was brought, proposed to come to council several months ago. It had got on the agenda and I think ended up getting pulled off before a public hearing was held. Was there a reason for the delay? It's probably six months ago, Caleb, that was on our agenda for our schedule, right? We had to schedule a public hearing.
I think, you know, we've been, we've been talking to Dave Brennan about it and, and just, and Brenda Sandberg and different people about the whole general idea of this shifting over there, and I'm not sure why it was officially on your agenda or not.
Yeah, I thought there was a, something made it get pulled off because there was a need to delay it.
No, no. We received two things.
State your name.
Caleb Pfeifer, 419 State Street. There were two receipts that came back in the mail that had taken a council vote from two different occasions, but I think it had to do with the same issue.
We scheduled it once and then rescheduled it, obviously, for today. But there was nothing that you needed to delay or you needed more time or something? Okay.
The sooner we can.
The C-1 use, you're okay to get, to go with R.L.B. if need be because the Planning Commission's not recommending the C-1?
I mean, we're okay with that, and we understand it, it's just adds another layer of process for us to go through zoning hearing and kind of, you know, opens it up for another round of opportunity to, to either end the project or to slow it down, but we're willing to move through that.
And there's no C-1 in this area?
No, there's not. No, uh-uh. The C-1 was just picked because it allows this size and type of use to happen in that classification.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Brennan?
Thank you. Jeff, just a couple of quick detailed questions here. With the parking, you have a lay here, is that for R.L.B. or C-1, or does that meet both requirements? That was my first question. And a second one is the, you have the setback from Fifth Street there, what was going to be the use of that setback? Or just to kind of keep it off the sightline for the existing residential on the side, or?
Well, first, the parking, we'll provide whatever parking count is required per whatever zoning we have.
Is what shown a certain requirement for one or the other?
Not at this point, no.
Okay.
Because the square foot of the addition is going to drive the calculations for the parking, so we just wanted to show that we have space to accommodate parking. And this, the, the question with the setback from Fifth Street was that basically the size of the, the size of the addition that we're thinking we need to be in is about a footprint of that size. It's a one-story addition. It's just one story, slab on grade, you know, so that any floor loading issues are easy to address. And that's the footprint of the square footage that we think the addition needs to be, and we just felt that was the best location orientation of it. And then it allows, if needed, in the future at some point to add on if more, you know, as they continue to collect and preserve Erie's history, they may need more storage space, and that's what that lawn area north of the addition would be for.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, we thank you very much. Are there anyone else like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of? Hearing none, anyone like to speak against the project? Anyone oppose the project? Is there anyone who'd like to oppose the project? Hearing none in administration?
Mr. President and members of city council, the city very planning commission at their meeting on November 19th reviewed a proposal to rezone 356 West 6 from residential limited business to local commercial and 333 through 353 West Fifth Street from R-3 High Density Residential to local commercial. Current owner of the property is the Erie Historical Society, is proposing a possible expanding of the museum into the properties they own on West Fifth Street. Since museums are not permitted in the R-3 district, the C-1 district would allow the museum to expand further since the museum exceeds the maximum square footage. With regards to this rezoning, the museum, the commission unanimously recommended the council not approve this, to rezone these parcels to C-1. The commission recommends that these parcels, the 356 West 6 remain R.L.B., and the properties on, the six properties on West Fifth Street be changed from R-3 to R.L.B. And the recommendation was based on the fact that C-1 district is not an appropriate district in this corridor. The uses in C-1 range from eating and drinking to used car lots, and the R.L.B. district is more compatible in this neighborhood. They asked that a dimensional variance can accomplish the need to expand without changing the zoning districts.
Any questions?
I mean, Mr. President, can I?
Yes, you go first.
Yeah, just break the monotony of her going first. No. So, so the organization is requesting a certain variance, or, excuse me, a certain zoning change. The authority, the group is saying no to that, but here's what we think would be appropriate.
Correct.
Is that, that's the process?
That is, yes.
Okay, and so, and in the rationale is that because of the other C-1 uses, they feel it is too exposing of that historic space?
Right, as Mr. Kidder said, they were afraid down the road, you have Millionaire's Row, and the possibility of a car lot going there upset the planning commission greatly.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
And they also, they also asked me to present to the zoning hearing board their recommendation that they approve this. So when they do submit to that, the planning commission will, they will have a letter from the planning commission suggesting that they approve the variance.
Now, if we, as council, if we were to vote on this, what's our purview to say, "Meh, I hear what they said, but we think C-1 will work, that'll be okay"? Could we do that?
Yes, you do, yes, you can.
All right. But we can.
Counselwoman?
Yeah.
Just a recommendation.
No, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm, yeah, I'm not trying to sound overly, usually, these are much less, these are more smoothly running than this, so.
Correct.
There's more questions, that's all. All right, thank you.
Counselwoman?
Thank you. Can we vote for the change to R.L.B. even though they've requested, or do we have to vote to deny the request?
You can. I contacted the solicitor's office.
Okay.
And you have the right to, because this is lesser than, R.L.B. is lesser than, C-1 less of an impact, and because there have been no objections, if there were objections, you might have to consider more because there is none, but Mr., I talked to Mr. Velella, and he says, "Yes, you can change and vote for R.L.B."
And in terms of the zoning consistency and zoning, R.L.B. fits better, even fits better than R-3, because R-3 could allow for like dormitories and things like that, high density.
Well, the whole block of Fifth Street is.
Because of Gannon?
Is R-3, yes.
Is that's because of Gannon?
But the next block over is back to R.L.B. So you're in transition from, you know, from businesses to high density.
College.
Right.
Okay, so this could be the beginning of the R.L.B. section?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Any further questions? Thank you very much. As previously indicated, it would be in our, what, first meeting, Jim, in February?
February 5th will be first reading.
First reading on that rezoning.
Okay, the next public hearing is relative to a, it's not a rezoning hearing, it's a waterfront conditional use hearing relative to property located at 239 East Second Street, relative to a waterfront conditional use request for the construction of a new home which was destroyed by fire in the waterfront residential district. Is anyone here to speak in favor of the conditional use request?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ed Sarafini. I live 239 East Second Street, 16507. My house was destroyed by fire January 20th, 2013. I'm looking to rebuild the house. The footprint will remain the same on the east and west sides, those will not change. North and south, the north front will stay the same, the south, I would like to move back 14 feet in addition to what's already there. It's currently a two-story home, and I want to go to a one-story home. Other than that, there's no other changes, the design of the home is kept very simple. There's no elaborate decorations on the outside of the house, it's just basic neighborhood construction. That's about it.
Are there any questions from council? Okay. Are there any questions from council? Just want to make sure, Jessica.
Okay, I'll ask a question. You want me to ask a question? I can ask one if you want.
If you have one.
You've, Mr. Sarafini, you completed the design review process and all that?
Yes.
And what you plan to do fits in with what we're trying to achieve in the waterfront area, even though I know you're on 2nd, so you're a little bit up from the waterfront, but everything's good with them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in favor of? Is there anyone else in favor of? Is there anyone else in favor of? Hearing none? Anyone opposed? Is there anyone opposed? Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, administration?
Okay, Mr. President, members of city council, this, the City of Erie Planning Commission met on November 19th, reviewed a proposal from Ed Sarafini to rebuild his home after a fire on the property that he owns on 239 East 2nd Street. Property is located in the waterfront residential district. The new house will be in the same footprint, plus a 14 by 14 rear addition. The new house will also be one-story instead of the original two-story structure. Most of the original landscaping will be kept the same except for the hedges will be removed. On November 6th, Mr. Sarafini provided the Design Review Committee with material and samples, photographs, and the Design Review Committee unanimously approved the request. The planning commission reviewed the proposal and was satisfied with the plans for the new house, keeping a near exact color and material scheme, so they unanimously recommended approval that this proposal be passed by city council.
Any questions to administration? Hearing none, we thank you very much for your time. As the previous two, we'll vote on this in February.
No, this is, this is not a rezoning, this is a waterfront conditional use request. This does not need any additional advertising, and I can put a resolution on for approval next Wednesday evening.
Very good. And if any councilperson has any questions regarding same, feel free to contact administration. Okay, and that concludes the three hearings.
Yes.
Now we're back to citizens to be heard.
Morning, council. My name is McDollan. My property is 19th and Reed. I'm a little bit fixed behind that fee increase. Why should peoples that pay their bills should be penalized for those that are not paying their bills? That don't make no sense to me now. I want you to paint that picture a little bit better so I can understand it because it looks kind of dull to me. I think the mayor went about that the wrong way. Collect that money that's owed out there, and if you come up short then, then up the fees, if you must up the fees. I don't think the fees should go nowhere. I don't think you should pass it. The peoples that is taking care of their business deserve to be treated better than that. The mayor is saying, hey, you, you don't have nothing to say about it. We should have all to say about it. We're paying the freight. I don't know about Joe up there, he needs some help. And you should help him. Go after the peoples that owe it. The peoples that's paying shouldn't be penalized, and that's what you're doing. It's not right. And you're going to see it later on down the road that it ain't right. The more you let them go, put a lien on their property, you put a lien on mine, you're taking it. Why can't you put a lien on theirs? It might take you a little while to get it, but you still will get it if you put the lien on their property. I say again, the peoples that's paying shouldn't be penalized, and that's what you're doing. It's hard for me to believe that you all came up with that. We don't never see Joe maybe once or twice a year down here. I see him in the paper. He better get out there and look things over. So he'll know what he's talking about when it comes to this violence that's going on. You know, there'll never be another Tulio. Tulio would get out there and talk to the people, see what, see what they had to say. Joe don't even know what the people look like because he don't go out there. He's in the wrong job. You want to go out there and see what's going on out there. Things are getting worse out there, they're not getting better. You take this club over here on Parade Street. The shooting, what I'm understanding, the shooting didn't happen in the club, it happened outside the club. But the club is being blamed for it. Hey, the owner of that club didn't tell them people to come by shooting at his building? So now, why? Why is he being dealt with so hard? Somebody knows something, yes, somebody knows something. But they ain't going to talk to the police, hell, they talked to the police, the police served to take them to jail. You got some, you got some hard fellows out there in them blue uniforms. I have asked you before, how do you train your policemen? You should train them to be courteous. There's some good ones, now, don't misunderstand me, I know there are some good ones out there. You take my house over there? Somebody broke into it? They been in there, stuff across the street been in there time and time again. I know they have because I see my totes. I had about 200 totes in there. I see some on his porch. And I tell the police. I have never called the police. Yes, I did, I called them this one time. Somebody had broke in and this guy, I ran down there, this guy coming out the house with armful of my fishing poles. I called the police. They talked to me about a minute or two, then they went and talked to him about five minutes, come back and told me they wasn't going to do nothing, we're not taking him to the, to the district justice. That was a decision that they shouldn't have tried to make. I told them, I said, you all go on. You all go on. It's a colored thing with the police, so I'm going to tell you. They want to treat us any kind of way, but we will not be treated any kind of way. We will not be treated any kind of way. We're citizens, we're taxpayers, we're human.
The bell rang, Mr.
Oh, I didn't hear it, Mr. Spoon.
Yes, sir.
You know me, when I get, well, you know it.
Okay.
I want y'all to do something, though, really. Think about it anyway, because you don't do nothing else.
Any other citizens to be heard?
This is team council.
Good evening.
And to, my name is Walter Thompson, 30, gave brother man in the street. All right, the fact of the matter is, if anybody's to blame for anything that's going on in Erie, it's us. All right, old school, we're heroes, not zeros. And you have to be out to the field, the pulse of the people. I'm out there, springtime, winter, fall, nothing keeps me down. But the fact of the matter is, you can't blame the mayor. We have to blame us because they're looking at us as far as being the bridge builders, and that's what we are. And the fact of the matter is, anybody in uniform, all right, protect and serve, that's their job. You can't blame them. We're on the same team, whether it's state police, whether it's veterinary order of police, whether it's FBI. Yes, there's a lot going on, and the fact of the matter is, you think about Homeland Security, I highly decorate you in that, can really go back into the pool bed. And I have a lot of respect for the city of Erie, Pennsylvania. We are on the map. I hate it that we missed out as far as the funds come from the governor because you look at Erie as being one of the number one tourist attraction in the nation because of peninsula and also the fishing. So I give a, I have attitude and gratitude for the FOP because they're doing a one hell of a job they're supposed to be, they should be commended. All right, and the fact of the matter is, I see Mr. Spoon, I see Mr. Jones, and I see others out there in the community, you being visible, and people, people, okay, they respect that because they know that you care. We ain't from Delaware because we do care, all right? And we don't wear no New Jersey. And when we get thirsty, we all go to Minnesota, all right? So I just thank you, county council, okay, because we represent not only Erie, Pennsylvania, but we represent the nation, one nation unguarded, individual, with liberty and justice, not just eyes because it's been cruel out there. I'm a father of, uh, 10, grandfather 28, great-grandfather 5. And when the hawk was out there, even though I'm a father, I would feel like a popsicle. But the fact of the matter is, God bless Erie, Pennsylvania.
Thank you very much. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Mr. Clem?
Ordinance is for final passage. Council file ordinance 15,855, an ordinance appropriating a sum of $300,000 from unappropriated anticipated revenue, providing for the expenditure thereof in the 23 Project Safe Neighborhood Grant Program. Motion of Mr. Witherspoon, second by Mrs. Rand Kuntso, the council filed bill number 15,855, now known as official file ordinance number 1, 2014, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brennan? Mrs. Rand Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Council file ordinance 15,856, an ordinance requiring all persons, partnerships, businesses, and corporations to obtain a permit for any construction or development, providing for the issuance of such permits, setting forth certain minimum requirements for new construction and development within areas of the city of Erie which are subject to flooding and establishing penalties for any persons who fail to or refuse to comply with the requirements or provisions of this ordinance. Motion of Mr. Mersky, second by Mr. Rand Kuntso, the council file ordinance bill number 15,856, and now known as official file ordinance 2, 2014, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brennan? Mr. Rand Kuntso? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mr. Mersky? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Council file ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15,857, an ordinance appropriating a sum of $87,447 to be received as a BRIN Criminal Justice Innovation Grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for the BCJI Little Italy Program. Motion of Mr. Brennan, second by Mr. Mersky, the council file ordinance number 15,857 have been registered by adopted on first reading at the city council. Mr. Brennan? Mr. Rand Kuntso? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mr. Mersky? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Council file ordinance 15,858, an ordinance submitting the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part 9, Utilities and Public Service Code Title VII, Other Public Services, Article 951, Residential Refuse, Section 95109, Garbage and Refuge Collection Fees. By increasing the yearly fee for collections of garbage and refuse from $192 per year to $220 per year, and by adding Section 951.091, Fee Increase Termination, providing for the termination of these fee increases for the 2014 budget year unless extended by city council.
Mr. President? Excuse me, can I make a comment on this, or is this the right time to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Just for the record, I'm for, you know, I understand the need to raise the rates, and I understand our refuse budget is going up on average $450,000 per year historically over the last five years. And so, you know, the need for the refuse and collection fees to increase is real. I also think we have a separate issue, and the separate issue is collection of back collection fees. And so, we are working towards that. I don't think it's an either or, I think it's a both. And, you know, everyone wants us to run government like a business. It's not good business sense to raise rates for one year knowing that you have a $450,000 bill coming up at the end of the year increase. So if you roll it back, $450,000 for last year, $450,000 for this year, you're almost at a million dollars in the hole going into next year. That's not good business sense, and so I will vote for this because we do need to raise the rates, but I'm not for the sunset provision on that.
Thank you, Councilman Mersky.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yes. As comptroller, I was probably firsthand knowing that, you know, this is an enterprise fund, and it has its own needs compared to the general budget. Knowing that, that we need to raise the rates, I think a lot of the issue was centered on the, a separate issue, which is the collection of the delinquent fees. They don't go together like Councilman Mersky said, it isn't like that, that problem with delinquent fees has been going on for years, but this year it became a focal point of the media, and it almost gave the citizens the impression that that was the entire problem when it's not. You know, the tipping fees and everything else have increased over the year. While I realize we'll have to vote for this, I too am not happy, but I will say this, this councilman will hold the administration to a higher standard this year, and I expect them to come up with some alternative measures to take care of the delinquent, delinquencies that exist now. I think too often in the past, we were shaking our head left to right when we need to start trying things and try, try anything that's positive in nature. So that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Kowalski.
Mr. President? I know this has been a hot topic throughout this budget session, throughout the new year here. People got to realize the delinquents are only part of our issues with the garbage fee increase. We have wages going up every year, we have services going up, the tipping fees at Waste Management, once again, went up from 39 dollars a ton to over $48 a ton. People got to realize if you recycle, that's only, we're only paying $3 a ton. So it takes partially council as well as the community and the citizens. Recycle more, we're not giving them or selling them our garbage at $48 a ton, and we can get those fees down. People also got to realize the fuel, the maintenance on our garbage trucks and our equipment, that all goes up every year, as well as we need to get new garbage trucks. It's in the budget for this year for three new garbage trucks at $160,000 apiece. So sure, we have the delinquents in there, but we also have our tipping fees, our operating costs, our insurance, our wages, all that's part of why our garbage fees have to increase. And I know Mr. Kowalski said we're going to hold it on the administration, we're going to hold it on to ourselves also. We are, we meet monthly at our finance meetings, we are going to come up with some type of solutions. Is it going to be a cure-all? Is it going to solve all the delinquent problems? There isn't one person up here or upstairs that can make that promise. This is not just a city of Erie problem, this is all the cities in PA or the majority of the cities in Pennsylvania, as well as a national issue. So we will do our due diligence, just like I said at our budget meetings, on our part to do whatever we can to help out, get these delinquents paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. President?
Councilman Jones?
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, none of us like the idea or the concept of raising taxes, obviously, or raising fees, which many people see on the surface as a backdoor tax, and you hear that language quite a bit. But I think when we have these types of situations, it's important for us as individuals who are in the meetings, who get the full story or more of the story than the average citizen, it's an opportunity for us to do a little bit of education and to say, again, as many of my peers have already said, that the cost of doing the business of refuse and sewer and everything else in the world is going up. And so with that said, I mean, And so with that said, I mean, that's the, that's the real issue around raising the fees. The last time we raised the fees was four years ago or so, and it was the same logic, and we tried to head it off and raise it, when we'd raise it, you know, four years ago, we raised it in the effort to not have to do it every year in a significant way, and we tried to plan out for four years, and we did all of that very well. But with that said, the business and the cost of doing it is increasing. The cost of bread is going up, the cost of milk, gas, everything in our world is increasing in price, and so that's a legitimate issue. I just want to speak to the point of the sunset provision, and not for the sake of, you know, long debate about it or anything, but just my rationale, and I think most of our rationale around why we supported this concept initially, was not to say that for one year, we're going to raise the rate, and at the end of the year, we're going into two thousand and fifteen, that we're going to eliminate the increase. It was a measure to do something that quite often government is not, we're criticized for not doing to ourselves, which is holding ourselves accountable to certain things, and holding our feet to the fire to certain things. And so this is one of those, in my opinion, in my rationale for voting and not having an issue with the sunset, I don't see it setting, I don't see the fee being repealed, and I'll be one hundred percent honest, I don't see it happening because the cost of business is not going to decrease. So the expectation of, or the, the idea around the sunset provision was not to say, hey, in a year, we're going to do something, we're going to repeal this, and we're going to lessen it. I think maybe that was the perception, maybe through media, or maybe just through the people hearing the conversation, but that is not our general intent. We understand we can't do that, but what the sunset provision does is it allows us, it forces us to have constant and continued conversation and planning around a very significant issue in our community, in relation to budget, in relation to services that we offer. We shouldn't do this to every, every budget line item, you know what I mean? I don't think that's appropriate, but I do think that in this instance, because it was so much attention brought to it, it's an opportunity to educate, and an opportunity for us to say, this is what we're committing, this is a way for us to commit to staying focused on this, because we have to look at it within the next eleven, well, twelve months. And so, again, no, no misconception from our perspective that we're planning on repealing. I think what the, what the intention is, I know what the intention is, is to keep us focused on doing just what citizens are asking, finding ways to get the delinquencies taken care of, and finding ways to deal with rising costs for this great and necessary service that we offer. So, again, I just wanted to take that moment to say, this is not about, okay, in a year we're going to repeal it, we're going to go back to the old rate. It's not, probably not going to happen, for many reasons, but it is an opportunity for us to be, to be able to hold ourselves accountable on a certain level, and not just the administration, but the administration working with council, like we continue to do, to do what's best for the citizens in this particular area. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say that if you just listen to what all the council person have just explained, it's a combination of so many avenues. There are positives in everything that everyone said, and you have to include administration in the planning. We are going forward to make something happen, trying to correct something that was bad for so many years. Folks owe us money, and we have to collect as much as we can, and we can't wait till next budget year to do that. We have to begin now, we have to establish a plan, meeting dates, to make things happen. It would have to be done with council and administration. It's okay to bang on the table, but we have to come out, we must come out with something positive, and that's one of the main items on my agenda for this year. It's my responsibility to help make it happen. I can't make it happen, I can help. That's number one for me. Mr. Clem?
Motion of Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight fifty-eight, have been registered by adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rand Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Next, we have council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight fifty-nine, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part Nine, Streets Utilities and Public Service Code Title Five, Sewers and Water, Article nine thirty-three, Sewer Rental, Section nine thirty-three point oh two A, Sewer Rates, by increasing the sewer rate service charge from twelve dollars per built to seventeen forty-five per bill, and meter quality charge per one hundred cubic feet per quarter, for the first seventy cubic feet from two dollars and twenty cents to two dollars sixty-five cents, and the next four thousand nine hundred and thirty cubic feet from two dollars and ten cents to two dollars and fifty-two cents, and all usage over five thousand cubic feet from two dollars to two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And by increasing the large volume user charges per one hundred cubic feet per month, for the first twenty-three cubic feet from one sixty-five, a dollar sixty-five to two dollars and sixty-five cents, and the next one thousand six hundred and forty-four cubic feet from one dollar and forty cents to two dollars and fifty-two cents. And all other usage charges over one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven cubic feet from one dollar and twenty cents to two dollars and thirty-eight cents, and enacting Section nine thirty-three point oh two one, rate increase termination, providing that those rate increases in effect in the two thousand fourteen budget year shall expire at the end of two thousand fourteen, unless otherwise extended by city council. Motion of Mr. Mersky, second by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance bill number fifteen thousand eight fifty-nine, have been registered by adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rand Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight sixty, an ordinance amending Part One of the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Article one forty-five, Officer and Employees' Retirement System, by adding a new Section one forty-five point oh seven G, Deferred Retirement Option Plan for All Participants. Motion of Mr. Mersky, oh, motion by Mr. Kwiatowski, second by Mr. Mersky, council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight sixty, have been registered by adopted on first reading at city council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rand Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight sixty-one, an ordinance in compliance with the, in accordance with the two thousand thirteen city of Erie budget, the sum of four million nine hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars is appropriated, and appropriated anticipated revenue for the relocation, reallocation thereof from debt service fund revenues to general fund revenues. Also, this transaction generates a change in the general fund and debt service real estate tax mileage rates. Motion of Mr. Jones, second by Mrs. Rand Kuntso, the council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight sixty-one, have been registered by adopted on first reading at city council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rand Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Next, we have a resolution by Mr. Jones, under New Business, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
It's been moved by Councilman Mersky.
I'll second that, Mr. Mersky.
Seconded by Councilman Winarski. Mr. Clem?
Any exceptions?
Separation. Hearing none.
Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Brennan, Kwiatowski, Mr. Rand Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Councilwoman. Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just mention that, Council President, we welcome you, we thank you for taking your turn, up there in the hot seat, as we like to call it. We look forward to your leadership this year. We also have begun to review the committee assignments that we have worked with the Council President to get squared away, and we'll begin working on our new assignments here in the new year. One of the assignments that I have been given is the chairperson of the Finance Committee, so we'll be looking at scheduling that to begin. We typically were meeting following a council, morning council meeting, so we'll probably try to keep with that schedule if it works. We do have several things that will be on our Finance Committee agenda in the coming year, a lot of these things we talked about today, both the trash and the sewer increases, and the different items that came up in budget session regarding those two increases. Additionally, looking at options for collecting those trash delinquencies, including things from, either from selling the delinquencies, to engaging a collection agent, to putting tax, or putting liens on properties, and whatever options are out there, we will begin those discussions at our Finance Committee, looking at what is legal and possible for third-class city, and also what is being done elsewhere. So we have several things to put on the Finance Committee agenda, so we'll be working on that and working with the council. If you all have any suggestions of items you would like us to address in finance, if you could also let me know. So in the next couple weeks, we'll get started on that, and I will begin looking into my other assignments as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Cass.
It seems like I'm always playing alongside you, Mel.
You're on my team, babe.
Yes, we are. No blocking your shot this time, right?
No.
I don't really have a report, but I'd like to thank council for welcoming me to my first meeting. Once again, thank the administration for all their help in the past, and I welcome our new controller. It's a little strange for me, when I came here today, I pushed the third-floor button. And I forced myself to remember not to turn right into my parking spot, but things, things are hard to change, but I do look forward to working with her, as I see I've been assigned to the pension committees, and you can rest assured that I will use my experience to help her transition, and will keep those funds moving forward. I just want to clarify one position, when, when I said I was going to hold the administration responsible, it goes without saying that I'm also holding myself responsible, because you'll find out that I will have my own opinions, and I hope you'll honor them, but I will come up with what I think are ideas, and I do hope that will, unlike the past, where sometimes I think we're looking for reasons not to try things, I think we need to start trying some new things, because the public expects us, of us. You know, it's hard to explain to an elderly woman who puts out a little bag at her neighbor who's a scofflaw who's not paying, you know. And I think, you know, we made such an issue of the, of the delinquents, that we forgot that there was a lot of issues involved in that refuse problem. And it wasn't just the delinquents, but it was tipping, salaries, trucks, equipment, fuel, all that, you know. And I think, once the public becomes an awareness that it's not just a general budget, but we have enterprise budgets and all that, we're going to educate them over the year, I think. And once again, I'd like to thank council, once again, for welcoming me in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to also congratulate you on the weight of responsibility to herd these cats, and be an example for us, so we appreciate that, and your willingness to do that. I would like to thank, Mr. Mers, excuse me, Mr. Winarski, for his leadership last year, and for his, his direction, and, and everything that you did, you know, leading, leading the ship for us last year. Don't have, you know, a real report as far as committees or anything yet, we have to, you know, we have some new assignments, some continued assignments, so I look forward to that. Again, I, I think it's really, it's really important that, in my opinion, that we have real valid, I started to say arguments, but I would say argument in the positive sense, dialogue, discussion, and debate, because if we're all up here agreeing, and we don't ever get passionate about this stuff, we're in the wrong service, in the wrong position, and we're not in the right spot to serve our community effectively. And so I do get a little passionate sometime, I get a little mouthy, I think I get that honest from, from my mom. My mom's really a passionate little pistol of a woman, and she keeps Mr. Spoon in line.
Oh, boy.
You know, so that's saying something. But, but I think we all have the same intention, the same agenda, is to do what's best for the citizens, and that have trusted us and elected us to position. And so that's, that's the passion that I speak with, that's the passion that I often get, I stand up with, and, and so don't mistake that for any of us, mistake that for personal dislike or disdain, or not, you know, we have great relationships here. I do want to say, though, that we have to continue to, to find ways to improve the thinking and the mindset of members of our community. And I, what I mean by that is, we have to, as Mr. Kwiatowski said, and I alluded to earlier, be better educators to the citizenry on why we do certain things, because we take it for granted. Like, we know what, you know, anticipated revenue means, we know what we mean by, you know, certain language that's on our agendas, we get that. The average citizen reads that that doesn't make sense. We have to do better at educating, we have to do better at communicating, we have to do better at sharing more appropriate information with citizens, so they know we're not just raising fees because of this reason, but there's a conglomerate of reasons, and parcels, and arms and legs to the stuff that we do, we don't just do things haphazardly. And we do truly do them with a lot of thought, and a lot of effort, and collaboration, and discussion. The other concept that I think is important for us to understand, that we need to change our minds about, is many times in Erie, and it happens everywhere, I'm sure, but people feel like, this is, yeah, this is where I live, but yeah, we got, we got all this crap going on, this is terrible, this happened, you know, we had shootings in our community, absolutely horrible experiences for some people. I was just thinking, my heat was active, my heater was acting crazy in my car yesterday, of all days, right? And then I was upset, and I'm fussing, and then I drove by with my cold air blowing, but I was in a car, and I drove by people who didn't have a car, people who were homeless. And then it makes you think a little different about the situation that you're in. And so I think if we begin to think differently about ourselves, and we begin to, to really do something to improve and enhance our community, one person at a time, and I'll end with this, this paraphrase, something my mom said, she said, you know, we always say, I'm just one person, but it's important to know that you, as one person, are valuable, and you have influence, and you can make the world a better place, at least in your little area. And if we all did that, then the whole, it, it quantums out, and we all get better, and the whole world gets better. So going into the, you know, the new year, or in the new year, let's change the way we think about Erie, let's, let's dare to think that we can do something huge, like an Erie inland port project, or something great on the bayfront. With, let's, let's dare to think that we can do something wonderful without it falling down, and quit referencing juice factories that didn't happen, and other projects that didn't happen. Let's make it happen, starting right now, because the past is done, but we determine our own future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I think we, that's a good title. We're going to be known as the council that made things happen. I like that. Councilman Mersky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I wanted to give kudos to the Erie Streets Department, and our snowplows in particular. These workers have done a fine job, given the amount of snow that we've had over the, since our last meeting. This is the first time where I've actually gotten phone calls complimenting the Streets Department, and not the complaint call, so thank you to the Streets Department for the fine work that they're doing. Just a reminder to our citizens, because I know it's been reported that other municipalities are behind on their schedule, but our garbage pickup is on its normal night this week, so with your refuse, please take it out. On your normal night this week, the weather did not affect our refuse pickup. Again, I want to commend our Fire Department on a great job in these harsh conditions. You know, they go out, whether it's a blizzard, whether it's forty below wind chill, and they do their job, and they do it well, so I wanted to thank them for that. And then finally, I just wanted to briefly address just the gun violence in the city. I wanted to thank the Erie Police Department for their fine work on this latest shooting, and I want to thank those who stepped up and did the right thing to aid the police in their investigation, to tragic unnecessary, and unnecessary violence that occurred, my condolences to the families affected, because a life's lost forever, the community's upset, and the family's grieving. And it's all because someone thought the right thing to do, to solve their situation, was to shoot a gun at a person in a crowded room. Somebody thought that was the right thing to do, and it has nothing to do with jobs, it has nothing to do with, you know, the excuses that we make for why it has nothing to do with, you know, the excuses that we make for why someone shoots somebody. Shooting is wrong. Killing is wrong. And I hear, you know, people say, it starts at home, but I agree, it starts at home, but it doesn't end there. It continues with your extended family, it continues at church and at school, it continues with the entertainment choices given to our kids where violence is celebrated, and it continues with us when we see something, but we keep quiet about it because it doesn't affect me personally. And these are the things that, it's easy to place blame, but it's, it's, the truth is, we're all responsible and we all must do our best to become part of making it better. And as part of that solution tonight, Connie Manis is having Youth Leadership Erie, she's having a meeting tonight at Ganin Palumbo Center from 5:00 to 7:00. I will be in attendance, and I encourage anyone who has young people, teenagers, eighth grade and up, that want to attend, 5:00 to 7:00 tonight at Ganin Palumbo Center, and I want to thank people in the community who step up, you know, like Sonia Arrington, like Connie Manis, who make a difference in this community. You know, so often you hear the bad things, but we have thousands of young people, and I literally, thousands of young people doing the right thing every day in this community, and we don't celebrate them enough. So, again, Youth Leadership Erie meeting tonight at Ganin Palumbo Center, 5:00 to 7:00. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Mersky. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, but I had a couple of comments on a few items that have occurred in the past couple of weeks here. With the CRIS that we didn't receive, I was, of course, disappointed, like many people, with that, that we didn't get selected for the program for our bayfront, but now the application, we knew the deficiencies and, you know, definitely we need to, we're going to resubmit that when possible, but if we do get selected in the future, I just want to explain to a couple of people that it's going to really help make development more feasible and help developers move quicker on the proposed project, and of course, if that happens, it's better for us all, so that's something we need to support, and hopefully it's going to come through. I did also want to say something about the East Erie Turners shootings. First of all, my condolences also to the family and friends of the man that was killed. I hope that the others that were injured that night will recover as soon as possible. Many of us, including myself, often talk about neighborhood revitalization in our city, but we need to, this will be very difficult to revitalize our city if we don't do something about this, reducing the violence, and we do to make it a priority and continue to make it a priority. And to reduce violence, we need to continue to reach out to those, most likely be involved and somehow get to the root of the problem. We also need to enhance and support the existing programs. As Councilman Mersky has mentioned, there's a lot of programs out there and a lot of things that are going on currently that are already addressing the issue. So definitely, with that said, we have a lot of work ahead of us. And lastly, congratulations to Councilman Witherspoon for taking a new role as our president, and thank you, Councilman Winarski, for your leadership this past year. And lastly, welcome to Councilman Kwetowski to city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Past president?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just would like to welcome Kaz to our council table here, along with our other re-elected officials here, Mr. Jones, Mr. Brennan, myself. I'd also like to welcome our new city controller, who took Kaz's spot, because he wanted to come on council, I guess, Teresa Stankiewicz, but welcome. We do look forward to that same open door and open communication we had with the controller's office as a council, so I appreciate that. Just look forward to a very productive year on our end. We have some issues on the table that, and some challenges, but I believe we have a good council here that are willing to address them and take them head-on and see where it gets us and what positives we can get out of them. Other than that, we did get our assignments and liaisons, we'll have a report on them as time comes, and one other note, in this time of giving, and it doesn't cost you anything, Erie Community Blood Bank, they need your blood. Thank you.
Thank you, past president, Winarski. I like saying that. I'd just like to welcome Kaz to the family. You'll see another side of politics sitting where you are. You bring a lot of financial experience with us, something we need, and we appreciate you, and you do a good job, no question about it. And thanks, once again, my fellow council persons for the confidence that you have in me. I won't disappoint you. Regarding the recent shooting, fortunately and unfortunately, I know all the characters involved, and I have to say to my community, I have to say to the African-American community, I have to say to the black community, I have to say to the Americans of African descent community, in trying to include all. We have to take care of our village, we have to take care, we have to make a change. When the police gets involved, they're doing their job. That's what they're doing, and if they don't show up, we complain about that. When they show up, if they show up in a hostile situation, they can't be, hello, how are you doing today? They got a job to do, they're trained, they want to go home to their families in the evening. We have to rectify a lot of things in our community. I know you want to see the mayor in our community, the mayor have a job to do. There's a lot of communities here. I'm in our community, Curtis is in our community, Mr. Mersky has been our community, Jessica has been there, Mr. Brennan has been there, and you'll see, not only this year, but years to come, as long as I'm here, I'm going to work in the community to do what I can do. It's very important that if you see a murder or three or four folks jumping on somebody, it's important to report that. I know what the street code is, I come from the street, I understand the street code. We have to get around that now. We have to get around that, and this message is directly to my community, because I'm there and I see it. And rest assured, if I see it, I can't wait to grab my cellphone. I'm not a rat. Call it what you want, it's important, we have to stop killing each other. I received a call from a friend of mine in Jersey, in Newark, former boxing commissioner for the state of New Jersey, Larry Hazard. He told me, he says, Spoon, in 2013, we had 139 murders, gun-related, the highest, number one. He said, that doesn't count carjacking, mugging, or anything else, just murders. And now we starting a year off with one, another young man, gone. I'm not here to preach to you, I'm saying to the total Erie community, especially the black community, we have to do something. We have to do something. Thank you very much. That ends my report. Controller?
I don't think I have a report yet, but I just want to say, I want to thank everybody for being so welcoming and helpful during this transition, and I look forward to working with councilmen and councilpeople and the administration in the next four years to come, so, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome aboard, administration.
Good morning. I'll keep it brief as always. I would like to congratulate Mr. President Witherspoon for his election by his peers as leading us in city council this year, looking forward to working with you. Mr. Winarski, thank you for your service, leading us last year, we certainly appreciate it. Mr. Kwetowski, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, congratulations on your reelection and your swearing-in ceremony that took place this week. Again, looking forward to working with all of council and to our new controller, Teresa Stankiewicz, who I've been calling Stankovich for the past eight months, so my apologies.
That is right, it is Stankovich.
Stankovich, okay. Congratulations to you. Just looking forward to great things in this coming year. Our community has a lot of work ahead of us. Thanks.
That concludes the report. Mr. Clem?
Yes. City council now adjourned at 11:35 AM. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Seran Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky.